Oh God, our Father. At the start of another day, we praise, we pause to acknowledge your presence with us. And to give you praise. In the quietness of our hearts, we recall your faithfulness. Your mercies and your grace, and we give you thanks. We acknowledge again your lordship over our lives and we submit to you. Thank you for the privilege of service. That you have allowed us to partner with you in this great work of leading your children to Christ. Thank you for all who have come to know you. Children, young people and adults through the ministry of the Sunday School. And for all your stewards whom you have called into this ministry. As leaders, our pastors, our superintendents, our teachers. The members of the administrative staffs in the different schools. Conscious of our weakness and our inadequacies, we have come this morning to be renewed, refreshed. Challenged again to a deeper level of commitment to you, to your cause and to your honour. Thank you for your servant Reverend Lloyd Richards, who will minister in your name. Grant him to minister in the power of the Holy Spirit, being only the channel of your blessing today. Give us all who listen, ears to hear you, openness of mind and responsive and obedient hearts. Bless the work of the Sunday School across this country at this very challenging time. When so many of our children are dying. Especially do we ask you to be gracious to the schools that are struggling. Let them to experience renewal through the Holy Spirit and come to know the sufficiency that is of God. And so, Lord, we commit this day's activities to you and pray that your guidance. And your direction, pray for your guidance and your direction in every deliberation, every discussion. Every response made, every decision taken. May your name only be glorified. And we pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sister. Thank you so much. And we, I, I know. Come, welcome us. This webinar this morning. I'm just checking, are you hearing me clearly?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Welcome to all of you, all of us, welcome from all the parishes. Welcome to members of the Sunday School Committee. Welcome to Reverend Williams, head of the Christian Education Department. And we welcome later on Reverend Richards. Will be our main presenter. I know that a Saturday morning is a busy time for most, if not all of us. Whether we are involved with personal or family matters chores. Or maybe for some others, there are other church activities. Including funerals that I know are taking place this morning. So thank you for taking the time out. Of what I think is a busy Saturday morning for you. This is the third meeting of leaders of the Sunday School since Covid. In fact, I think we can safely say Covid has changed how we live and how we work. How we do church. It has affected negatively the attendance of many of our churches, if not all. Especially among children and youth. But you know, friends, the mandate. From the Lord is still applicable. Go and disciple people. Go and disciple people. Unless we think, you know, it's no longer relevant, you just have to listen to the news. Each day and we hear horrible stories. That involve children and young people. Who are being gone down, who are involved in, in crime. Who are actually murdering their schoolmates, so our country. Is indeed in need of that ministry of the Sunday School. So that's why we're here today. As leaders in the Sunday School. We're here to be encouraged, to be inspired. To continue on the task that we have settled to do. We are here to be informed about how we can help or how we can be helped. The Lord's mandate. Our theme evangelization, outreach and inreach for Sunday School growth. Presenter indeed will have that for us. But that we decided as a Sunday School Committee after wrestling with. Hearing the discussions that were on in the General Assembly of the Jamaica Baptist Union. We, we are convinced that the Lord wants us to focus in this way this year. So a heart to welcome to all of you who have come. I see some are still coming, we know that over a hundred and sixteen persons. Registered, so we are expecting more persons to join us. But as Brother Sheldon said, we want to keep the time, we want to, to start, we have started on time. And my, my prayer is that we will go through these two hours utilizing as best as possible the time at our disposal. So I welcome you all, heartily. And pray that you will find these two hours fruitful. And that at the end of it, you will feel that it was good to be here and that you will be fired up and inspired to go back to your Sunday School. To your teachers, to your, the workers in your Sunday School and as leader. You will lead the charge or continue to lead the charge. May God bless you all, bless us all. As we continue to serve him. Through the ministry of the Sunday School. God bless you all. Now. Welcome, pause to welcome Reverend Dwayne Williams, head of the Christian Education Department. Of which the Sunday School is a part. And I have William to bring greetings. Welcome Reverend.
Brothers and sisters. I'm not sure if yours to be many.
Here you are now, you're sort of muffled.
Oh, good morning, I'm trying to see if you're hearing me there.
Yes.
Right, okay, great, great, great.
I'm seeing you as well.
Oh, you're seeing me, awesome, awesome, awesome. So, good morning, my brothers and sisters. It is a joy to be sharing with you in this forum this morning. And you know, I am happy that we have been summoned by the Sunday School Committee of the Jamaica Baptist Union. To have a conversation this morning on the matter of growth. Because growth is so important to the ministries that we offer. But as we look at the conditions around us, we realize that there are many obstacles to grow. And if we should borrow from the farming analogy or the farming experience. We would say there is a drought or a famine in many of our churches. For we see a lack of, not just in Sunday School, but a lack of growth in many of our ministries. And the growth, the lack of growth that we're seeing is attributed to a number of factors. And these factors are both internal as well as external factors. When we look at some of the internal factors, we come to recognize that sometimes the lack of growth that we're experiencing. Have to do with how we are organized as church. Or the lack of growth internally is unwillingness to make the necessary adjustments to our programs. I believe there's a microphone that is on that we may need to mute. Thank you. So the lack of growth could be attributed internally to how we're organized as church. Or our lack of preparation for the various ministries, in particular the Sunday School ministry. The lack of growth could also be attributed internally to our unwillingness to make the necessary adjustments to our programs. Because we have tell ourselves and we have bought into the, the concept that this is how we have done it and this is how it must be done. Or it could be the unavailability of teachers and for some context, resources. But the lack of growth is not only internal but also external. External factors also contribute to. We see migration in some of our communities that is affecting church and church attendance. We see declined birth rate in some areas and a growing disinterest in church and God. And that we cannot discount this morning, that more and more of our young people, more and more of our adults and children. Have little or no interest in the things of God. And there is a preoccupation these days with other activities outside of church. And so, given all that is happening within and outside, temptation for us as church is to give into hopelessness. The temptation is to grumble and complain. The temptation this morning is always to look at what, what we have done and believe we, we need what, what, what. To believe that we need what others have in order to do or to be. However, it is my prayer this morning that as we come to this meeting to listen, to share. That we will be challenged to see that we can do it. We'll be challenged to see that what we have is enough. And it is enough for what God is calling us to do in this season. And so I pray that we will never fold our hands and resign ourselves to despair. Rather, I pray that we will be bold in our efforts. Being led by the Spirit to engage the Sunday School ministry with the passion and purpose needed. Brothers and sisters, we have this ministry this morning to teach, to nurture and to equip God's people. So I greet you by charging you to go into all the world as a church. Not just in the world outside, but within the church itself, to the street corners, the byways and edges. And to teach our children, youth and adults the message of Jesus. And as we teach them, we believe that the Spirit of God will lead them to know Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior. That is the great commission and that is the commission we are called to embrace this morning. So once again, I thank you all for logging on and being on this meeting to our Sunday School superintendents and assistant superintendents. Thank you for being part of this session. And thanks again to Mrs Samuels, the chair for the Sunday School Committee. And her team for once again engaging us in this conversation. And I am so happy and pray for our brother Lloyd Richards, who will. Unpack the conversation for us this morning. And also for Dr Anderson Campbell, who will also be engaging us later on in this session. Thank you so much, brothers and sisters, for logging on and for being part of this session. And I wish for you an inner. And then God bless you all.
Thank you Reverend Williams, thank you for those words, those sobering words of encouragement and challenge. Yes, we recognize indeed our mandate from the Lord himself. To go out and to reach and to teach. To disciple. Yes, we hear that challenge not to throw up our hands in despair. In spite of, in the face of so many challenges in our society. But you know, we thank God that he who has called us. Is here to equip us and so we, we bless his name. Thank you Reverend Williams for those words. Now friends, we, we want to move on. We want to move on briskly in this program, so we will use the time well. And so we're going to get right down to it shortly. I'm now going to call on our sister, Dr Cynthia Anderson. To introduce our guest presenter, our main presenter this morning. So Dr Cynthia, over to you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, good morning.
I'm very happy to introduce to you this morning Reverend Lloyd Richards. A servant of the Lord Jesus Christ. Who he has gifted in the prophetic and healing ministry. His two spiritual passions are prayer and evangelism. And so you understand why we have invited him to be with us. As an activist in prayer, he trained and organized prayer initiatives in St James. Such as all night prayer meetings and prayer walks, patrols in the communities where he has pastor. As pastor in the Jamaica Baptist Union for over eighteen years. Reverend Richards has served in Spanish Town, Montego Bay. And is presently the pastor of the Monique Circuit of Baptist Churches in St Anne. Where a prayer twenty-four seven ministry plan has been implemented and functioning since April twenty twenty. Under his leadership. Presently, he serves as one of the deputy moderators of the St Anne Baptist Association. He has been sent by God on prayer walks, drives for the entire island of Jamaica for three days. Reverend Richards wrote and lectures the course, Prayer and Revival. At the Emmanuel Caribbean University in Montego Bay. My brothers and my sisters, Reverend Richards is co-founder and managing director along with his wife Andrea. Of the Links Mission Team, leading mission trips to take the gospel locally, regionally and internationally. It is with much pleasure that I invite you all to join with me. And help me welcome the dynamic servant leader Reverend Lloyd Richards. As he presents to us evangelization, outreach and inreach for Sunday School growth. Let's welcome him, thank you.
Jesus Christ, we praise, a pleasant morning to you, my brothers and sisters.
Good morning, Reverend.
Good morning. Morning Sister Lillie Samuels and thank you, Dr Anderson. I can safely say one of my mothers in the faith, one at whose feet I have sat and whatever I am today, if I am anything. I owe much of it to her, thank you so much. Sister Lily Samuels for the invitation. On, in terms of the committee, I am deeply honored. And in my own prayers, I see this as an open door. And I was careful to thank the Lord ahead of time for an open door to speak on such an occasion. So wherever you are, good morning to you. I want us not to just be mere observers, but be active participants. I will share with you clearly that in terms of a meeting like this. I want to encourage you not to try to hold on to everything I will say. But I think it's more realistic and practical to try to find that one thing. Or those two things that may be applicable to your situation. And you will find this session to be more meaningful. Again, good morning to one, good morning to all, God bless you and I trust that this will be a time of transformation. Not only for you personally, but your household, your church, your community and your parish. Let's continue with prayer. Dear Lord, I am yours. Yours for the breaking, yours for the melting, yours for the molding, yours for the filling. If you can use anything, use me, Lord. Holy Spirit, you are the greatest communicator. And so you are more than welcome to be at the very center of this presentation. That we will not only like what is being said, we will not just be admirers of what, what is being said. But we may become activated to carry out. That which is being said in Jesus's name, amen. So then, amen. So then my sisters and brothers, I have played with your theme a little bit, Sister Samuels. I have played with it, I, it's not a mistake the way how it is written. Because I believe the end all of your effort is that you want to see growth. So deliberately placed Sunday School growth. And how is this Sunday School growth going to be realized? So an evangelization or evangelistic program embracing the idea of outreach and inreach. So I, I wanted to, I've not changed your theme, but just look at it that way. I have narrowed down the whole matter of the aim of my presentation. Is to release a model that will increase awareness in the first instant. And not only will it increase in awareness, but I want to see this as information that will lead to activation. I have just about forty minutes, which is hardly enough to deal with a subject matter of this magnitude. And yet, it is enough time within which to. Bring about, because I mean, the Lord does need some time more than one minute to change a life. And our lives always need changing, so I'm gonna break it down this way, twenty-five minutes for presentation, beginning now. And fifteen minutes or so for interaction. Because. I'm careful to tell myself, it's not just a matter of what I have to say. I'm not just here to come to give you content, we are here to engage and together determine content. I wanted to bear in mind that a deadline or timeline for implementation is May twenty twenty-four. Yes, so within the context of the presentation, be ready, get your pen and paper ready. To ask, is there something from this presentation that I do not have to take ten officers meeting to go and talk about it over and over again? But there is something I can implement, if not through the church, which you must observe that system, I can implement at some level. So May is a timeline. The best place I believe to begin is with the word of God. So Mark ten, verses thirteen to sixteen tells us. And I, I felt that we had to look at the whole matter of Jesus's ministry in relation to children. So people were bringing little children to Jesus for him to place his hands on them, but the disciples rebuked them. Of course, in that verse thirteen, you know that the disciples represent church folks, we people. Okay, and people, meaning parents, were bringing their children to Jesus to have him bless them. But the disciples rebuked them. In the context of scripture, when you look at you and your church program, are you a facilitator of Sunday School? Or are you among and Sunday School? The, my presentation will really surround children and youths. Because of the problem which I don't need to go over coming out of our last assembly. That the adults have returned to church, but many of our children and youths have not. So I'm defining Sunday School in the context of children and youth. So where our children and youths are concerned, are we like Jesus embracing them or rebuking them? It's a good question to ask. And if not literally, by our very program and stance, what are we doing? But verse fourteen says, when Jesus saw this, he was indignant, he said to them, let the little children come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of God belongs such as these. Truly, I tell you, anyone who will not receive the kingdom of God like a child will never enter it. And he took the children in his arms, placed his hands on them and blessed them. And every time I read verse thirteen, especially when I do infant education, I emphasize the importance of good touch. Okay, and the touch of Jesus here, it does not demean, it does not devalue, in fact, it elevates, it places a premium, it places hands on them and bless them. The touch of Jesus makes people feel better than they are, make you, make people feel like somebody. Yes, I'm always amazed at Martin Luther King, little term where he says, everybody's searching for that sense of somebody-ness. Me as somebody too. And that's what Jesus did, so based on your church and program. Because I'm seeing the ministry here of Jesus being represented through the Sunday School. That sense of affirmation, making people feel a sense of somebody-ness. Me as somebody pitney too, okay? All right, a second scripture, Mark chapter nine, context slightly different. That verse seventeen, oh, a man in the crowd answered, teacher, I brought my son, who is possessed by a spirit that has robbed him of speech. Whenever it seizes him, it throws him to the ground, he foams at the mouth, gnashes his teeth and becomes rigid. I asked your disciples to drive out the spirit, but they could not. After Jesus had gone indoors, his disciples asked him privately, this is, I mean, transition to verse twenty-eight. Why couldn't we drive it out? He replied, this kind comes out by prayer and of course, a manuscript or in some translation, you would see prayer and fasting. Now to bring children to Jesus, is that a good thing? Absolutely. But although children were brought. Are, are this son was brought to Jesus. What is clearing is the inability of the disciples to help. In terms of the matter at hand, don't we feel that way sometime as a church? That we, we do not only have a problem of people coming, our children coming, but they come with a myriad of needs. And we are not able to fulfill them. What is clear also in the passage is that all needs are not just psychological or not just mental, some needs are spiritual. In fact, Gary Collins, one of whom I have great respect in his book, Christian Counseling. Embraces the idea that we should not, to every problem, there is a spiritual side. And I. Do not just need to make reference to what Gary Collins has said or read the thoughts of others. I have had some encounter, albeit not many, in the context of worship that brothers and sisters, it requires prayer and fasting to deal with some spiritual supernatural, which I'm sure some of our children may be under. Again, I want to be careful to say we have to have a balance. Because some of the needs may be social, but you cannot use the social to match the spiritual or necessarily spiritual to match the social. So be mindful of that. I would like to know, is everybody hearing me clearly, is everybody seeing my screen clearly so far?
Yes, yes.
Awesome, awesome, okay. So then brothers and sisters, I've given you just two scriptures. These scriptures alone, my attempt was never to preach them. But it's amazing that you read one verse one day and it says nothing and on another day it says something. They are slightly different, but the first scripture I wanted to see emphasizing the fact as to how we should be when children come to us. But the second scripture emphasizes our inability or inadequacies. But I'm glad that in verse. But I'm glad that in verse twenty nine, Jesus gave some suggestion. This kind comes out only by prayer. But verse twenty eight is a good question to ask. When the disciples met privately, they asked him, why couldn't we drive it out? So Sister Lily, that's a good question right here to ask. It's a good question, this Sunday School, for this Sunday School to ask, why couldn't we drive it out? Why can't we, why can't we connect? You see, the question goes beyond the 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 words as it is, we have to make it applicable to our situation. Because if they're asking a question imperibly, Jesus will give an answer. The whole matter of scripture, brothers and sisters, I want to you to watch this video. I wanted to make little notes, it's just over two minutes, it's not long. And to see the relevance of Bible engagement. And even as we began with scripture, throughout this presentation, there is no doubt that we have to give credence to scripture. So um let's watch and listen.
There was a recent study by the Centre for Bible Engagement where they pulled forty thousand uh general population in the US from eight to eighty. And they just wanted to see how we are engaging with scripture.
Right.
And they discovered something that actually became kind of the profound discovery of the entire study. They weren't even looking for this and this is kind of became the highlight of the study.
Right.
Um, when we're in the scripture one time a week, and that could be church on Sunday, that's pastor saying, you're open your Bible. We hear the message, one time a week had negligible effect on some key areas of your life. So I'm gonna spell that out more here in a moment. Two times a week, negligible effect. Now, at three times a week, there was a blip on the map, like there was a heartbeat. Something happened, again, a heartbeat. But here was the profound discovery. When we're in the scripture four times a week, it literally spikes off the chart. You would expect that it'd be one, two, I mean, there'd be a gradual incline on the effect and impact that would have in your life. But it was literally one, two, three, four, something radically happens.
Okay, you got my curiosity.
To this extent.
What kind of behaviour is being affected?
Feeling lonely drops thirty percent.
Wow, with four times a week in the Bible.
Four times a week in the Bible. Anger issues drop thirty two percent. Uh bitterness in relationships, marriage, a relationship with your kids and so on, drops forty percent. Alcoholism drops fifty seven percent. Feeling spiritually stagnant, you know, if there was one area when I'm talking with people that that they'll be honest about is they just feel spiritually stagnant. Ask them the question, how much time are you spending in scripture? If they're in the scripture four times a week or more, it drops sixty percent.
Wow.
Viewing pornography drops sixty one percent.
That's very important.
Now, on a flip positive side, sharing your faith jumps two hundred percent.
Wow.
Because you have a confidence in God's word. And then discipling others jumps two hundred and thirty percent.
That's that's amazing right there.
I hope that you found that amazing too. I can hear some person saying, play it again. But we won't have time to play that just now. I hope however that you were motivated and the 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 whole idea, brothers and sisters, that the more time we spend in the world is the more effective we are. It um it will improve our lives in terms of dealing with the negatives, but also bringing out the positive, which is what Sunday School is really about. So it's the engagement of scripture and part of our responsibility is not just the class that is on Sunday morning, but to find practical ways to motivate and inspire all people, both church people and unchurched people, to stay in this scripture, to read the scripture. Let us see that as part of our the main task we have to do. Um, in a survey done some years ago, it was estimated, I don't know in terms of this would have been before Covid, what it is presently, but thirty million persons reported enrollment in Sunday School. And three key areas are emphasised, salvation, character building, equipment for character building. The purpose of this Sunday School um is study for justification, sanctification and service. Of course, you see that is related to the points that were were just made. Um justified by faith, we are sanctified and set apart for Christian service. So you you could say the whole matter of this Sunday School is looking at the whole person, right? And I want to see the whole person, that does the whole person in terms of church, but the whole society. You know, recently I came across information that suggested, I mean, I always knew it, we always knew it. But even my scientific study was showing that going to church is good for people. And it was not specific to Sunday School, but of course they are related. Going to church is good for people because the studies are showing that people have better ways to deal with some of the challenges of life once they go to church and they are exposed to the gospel and exposed to the whole matter of Bible reading. So the truth on the school is the whole church of God engaged in a systematic Bible study to ascertain the whole will of God as revealed in his word for their lives. I want however, challenge the whole matter of systematic Bible study because I don't think it always has to be systematic. Believe casual exposure to the word of God is also important. So the statement by itself is not wrong, but I don't think it's comprehensive. Casual engagement with scripture, I don't know how it works, but I believe something happened. And Sunday School is a mighty evangelistic agency. Says one writer, if it is not evangelistic, it isn't the Sunday School. Now, that may be up for debate, but how I understand it is that that evangelism is the one and only, but it has to be one of the main focus. Now, the Sunday School is aims is to make Christ known both to those within and without. And I couldn't agree more with a statement like that since part of our engagement this morning is to not just look in, but also look out. So we have a responsibility for the entire society. Now, some view, Sunday School, VBS, and I have included Children's Rally as evangelism tools. My encouragement to us, and I heard Reverend Williams made some allusion to it a little earlier. Let us not become static, let us not become rigid. These, when I was growing up, primarily would have been in the context of the church. But when we look at what has happened in our world, this this is the mobile age, so please make them mobile tools. Do not confine them to the church building. I don't know whether it was a coincidence, but I was just, I wasn't searching for it just before, while I was getting ready to come on screen. I was just watching a YouTube video about a mega Baptist church. Uh, I think it was an Arkansas Baptist church in the US, mega church now closed. How beautiful the building was and something just got a hold of me. If we are serious, Sister Lily, about this Sunday School, we have to look at church without walls. Because I just had a feeling then that many of these wonderful buildings and views in a moment, they can be no more, they could be no more. Based on the realities, when you look at what is happening in Ukraine, when you're looking at what is happening in Gaza and with so many wars on the horizon, buildings are less important, our greatest investment is people. So as Roy Fish mentioned, evangelising in the church is like fishing in a bathtub. It's terribly convenient, you don't catch much. I form the impression that that's part of the problem in the church. We have a theology of convenience and not commitment. So if the thing is going to stretch us or if we are asked to do something, if I can find some spare time, as our immediate past president Reverend Leila said in a ceremony preached at Otrius, at our association, um manual service, we try to fit God in terms of convenience. If I can find some time, I can give you. So the Christian faith calls us beyond convenience to commitment. Where can these things we're talking about find expression? To answer this, we need to identify the places where children meet. Where are our children on Sundays? Where are our youths on Sundays? I could tell you from the top of my head and it would make it no less legitimate where they are. There is a survey sheet given in our JBU mission twenty twenty, church goat implementation and manual. Although we have kind of put aside the idea of twenty mission twenty twenty, yet the manual represents, in my opinion, an important tool for ministry, it has ministry ideas that goes beyond time. You can get that from your church, get it from JBU, so it will assist you in determining where they are. But I tell you, I was on a mission trip last week, we for the first time included in our programme on Sunday morning, an engagement on the sports field, we came out about seven fifteen. And right there on the playing field in Mango Valley St Mary, there were mixed, most of who were there were males playing football. And of course, we just came on, we just stood there, we greeted them. And when the opportune time came, a young, one of the young men kicked the ball very far. And it's like the Lord just quickly and said, ask him. By the time they are to receive the ball, can you give us a minute to pray with you? And of course, guess what they said? They said yes. And in one minute, shared a scripture and prayed with them. So they are on the playing field. They are on the playing field was near the community centre. They have to find expression, friends, corners, lean, square, the shops and evening or homes. So let's take the risk by conducting home-based VBS, home Sunday School and Children's Rally. And I'm including the all of these because I still believe they are related to Sunday School because each of them, they have value. We have heard before, but please, for God's sake, let us be creative in our presentation. But creativity is sometimes lacking because we don't take time to prepare. We take time to prepare for our students though, when we are preparing for classes in terms of education. So cartoon characters, toys, puppetry. I know when I was in Elton, in the circuit, um Lindsted would have helped greatly. Dr Anderson would remember in terms of the Angels Church in particular. And I, at the time, in um, in still a wonderful purpose ministry. Sometimes we don't need to create, recreate anything, we just need to seek the help of others. Creativity, you don't even have to wait on others, there are things in the environment, plants, animals. I came across a trap called, one time called a potato that wasn't a Christian. And I love, I just know that that would be good for people. I didn't buy those trucks, I discovered it right there in a church office. So the tools we sometimes need are there. Now, as it relates to evangelism, and I got it from this question with Sister Lily, that we must not see Sunday School simply as wanting to complete content. That is important, but we need to be deliberate in our presentation of the gospel. And to deliberate in terms of the presentation of our gospel, ask the question. Make sure the listeners always have the opportunity to receive Christ. Would you like to receive Christ? Dr Richards, she has been from one of our Sunday School, the money Sunday School. She was teaching and all she did in taught lessons simply asked a question a couple of weeks ago. And the child made a decision for Jesus right then and there. It did never happen in terms of the public worship, is it legitimate? Yes, very much legitimate. Now, I want all Sunday School practitioners, and I know that superintendents and assistants are here. One of our weaknesses, even if it's not yours, we have learned to testify about healing. We have learned to testify about blessings, but you know, we don't spend time sharpening up our salvation story. And that's why when we have crucified, we already know what to testify, but here's a helpful guide. Three little things you bear in mind. If you and learn to share your testimony in one to two minutes. My life before receiving Jesus, what was it like? How did I receive Jesus as my Lord? What happened? Where it was, was it a dream? And it doesn't always have to be crucified. My life since receiving Jesus, so it's the difference that Jesus has made. If we had time, I would use this forum to have some people practise your story, but work on your salvation story, please. Let that be one of the things you do when you leave here. You can convert a salvation story, you can do it into video, you can do it into audio. So many creative ways, get it out there and be ready to tell the children your story. Of course, discipling them continues the process. So VBS could serve as a process of introduction and VBS, not just VBS, but Children's Rally as a process of introduction and Sunday School, the process of discipleship, which is over a lifetime, over a period. So Sunday School really and truly is not an event. It's a lifestyle. I want us to see it in that light, I hope we could. In our evangelism explosion, JBU twenty twenty church goat implementation manual, here is a saying, when it comes to evangelism, there is a disconnect between aspiration and action. So if I were to ask particular questions of us, we would answer in the affirmative and and it's more aspiring in terms of what we should do and what we want to do. Well, you say when it is work time, I don't know about you. We have a good way of talking about ideas, but when it comes to work and implementation, which is where the action is, very few turns on. And so we have a set of people who are over work and some hardly doing any things. What tools should we use? That is a question that can only be answered by knowing well the people in your church and the community. When you know them, you can determine which method and which tool resonate with your congregation. It connects with the unchurched in your neighbourhood. This is my list of types of Sunday School. Not just from readings, but from actual information, dialogue over with others. So aftercare Sunday School, I don't know if anybody has ever heard of that, but in the book, um, Merrill Taylor, um, no, Roger Bowen, So Send I You, in his book, um, So Send I You, um, was the one that, you know, provoked that idea, aftercare Sunday School, satellites on the school, community Sunday School, yard Sunday School, in-house Sunday School. Now, the satellites on the school, CLM Baptist Church has a model. And what they did were was when they recognised what was happening, they targeted three areas. And within those three areas, the aim was to identify a location. And they use the people or persons in that community to invite the people to commune, to 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 satellites on the school. What I like about Salem is that based on their story, they started twice per month. And this is very important, you know, at the start of with sometime bite of more than we can chew. It's best to begin small and practical. But guess what? As it was working, they saw the need to to expand. So it increased to four Sundays in one community, over forty. And the the stories told in the Mon Edgecombe community, forty persons would have turned up. And so Sister Lily, you know, and everybody, the outreach, that was the outreach. But then they organise themselves so that at least once per month, they could have these persons in church. Of course, it required a little more work, it required transportation, in some instances, some refreshment, but that's growth. You know, I decided I was not just going to be bookie. I wanted to be practical because sometimes we think nothing is happening, but the solutions to our problems exist right in our very churches. Community Sunday School is a phenomenon I learnt off in the Brownstone Baptist Church, you know, who was initiated this, the youths. So a youth leader was identified in each class. And the aim was to target the unchurched every Sunday except for a Sunday. And because there were many children in the community who never attended church. And so they go into the community, you know what? The going in the community made Sunday School consistent. I want to challenge us. I I think one of the problems we are facing might be the reporting mechanism. We are structured in such a way that we just see Sunday School as to what happens Sunday morning. But this programme, there should be a place to report about it as part of the overall thrust and not just on the morning. But this program, there should be a place to report about it as part of the overall thrust and not just on the morning. Where did they meet class houses? Our persons made them, them, their, their house is available. And many of us as Baptists probably still have those class houses. If we don't have them, we have community centre. What I like it was that they collaborate with the Sunday School Department. Also, although it was youth led, the material would have come through the Sunday School Department. And the result was a greater bond in terms of community. And they discovered other areas of ministry and the stories told about the hospitality, what there were certain social needs. That were, that confronted them and the hospitality ministry was able to respond to those needs, community Sunday School. Higginsland story. They had no Sunday School. Um, but one leader there said in twenty twenty three, you just noticed people started, the Sunday School started growing. When I asked, what, what was it that you did? She, she said, pastor, probably the only thing we did is praise, not any great thing. Um, I've heard since that the whole matter, they're part of what drew them were the instruments in terms of music. And the instruments, you know, sometime we need something to draw. And that's what I call Ministry of Connection before you can release content. Hear the beauty about it, what I love. And it was applauded at the Saint Anne Baptist Association, a meeting we had, I think in January. The age group is zero to fifteen. I also have much respect for you, but unna na go nowhere. Unna na go nowhere. And what do I mean by that? Unna na leave God, unna safe and secure. So every superintendent that is on, you have to recognize the energy has to be directed. Towards the youth population and our children. And, and so that is a great story. They present, they have four active classes. No, they draw back them, come late sometime, but she said them still come. You know, and once they are coming, that's a good thing. Other types of Sunday School, I'm big on yards on the school, you would recognize through the Jamaica Baptist Union Mission Agency. For Mission Emphasis Month, that's part of our program. We rolled out last year, several churches participated. Of course, as per principle, we would have a discussion with Reverend Williams. So that, you know, such approach could be strengthened uh, by the Christian Education Department. Sabah, so I go, going in reverse. We have a comm- um, I'm in charge of mission and outreach. And we had one person from Saint John Baptist Church. I don't know if somebody you know Saint John, but Saint John is part of Brownstone. And what she did was to discover a home in the community, started Sunday School at that home with two children. That has been in progress since February. Now you might think it's nothing, but don't we have to add those? When, 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 when she reported that, when she went there, she recognized that, listen. Listen, they were on church, but the parents are now asking questions and she's looking at how that can grow. Of course, the arts on the school is part of the initiative to what we call Community Connect. Team at the Money Baptist Church. And so the, the leader of the Community Connect team. In dialogue with other church leaders, have established some homes. And being that needs to grow in, in, in several, at least three, three areas. Where the children would meet at those homes and teach them the Sunday School. But again, I don't think we have made provision for the reporting mechanism so that it can even be captured nationally. Friends who have a supporter for comfort, so Children's Rally, talking about the L M T story. Um, that's the links mission team, as Dr Anderson would have mentioned, we doing mission locally and overseas. Now, our first trip to Saint Vincent, four of us went. When we went, we did what was called a Children's Rally. And we had overwhelmingly about a hundred and fifty children. Turned up for the Children's Rally, which was held on a day. I'm, I'm gonna, can somebody tell me what you think brought out? One hundred and fifty children in the context of a day. I would like two persons to make a guess. Uh, whether, I don't know if you wanna put it in the chat or just open your mic and say, raise your hand and, and tell me. Just make a wild guess. Why, what you think would have brought out so many children? Do you think we took the regular approach or something else? Is there anyone who wish to give an answer? Any suggestions?
Somebody saying games, somebody's written in the chat, games.
Games, yes.
Has written food.
Food, yeah. Absolutely.
Musical instruments.
Musical instruments. All right, thank you. We have a wonderful list there. You should steadily give them all prizes because they're right on the ball. Go and do likewise. All of those things are crucial and important in terms of, we have to do. Practice mission connect before we do mission content. You know, as Baptists, we are to be proud of it. We are not short on content. Our problem is connection. Okay? And she's right, you know, the, the, one of the main attraction was, yeah, they call it in Saint Vincent, a bouncing castle. Okay, bouncing castle. We, we call it, um, what we call it, where you jump up in another system. Um, yes. Yes, I tried to remember the local terms. See, I remember the, the overseas term. But we bounce about, the bounce about, right? So friends, in terms of packaging the gospel, the bounce about will, will, will interest people. And as you interest them, you must also have content. The nature of the Children's Rally is Bible based. So as they mentioned, the bo- the bounce about would come under games. And then we have Bible stories rather than us talking, we, we, we have a video story. And yet it doesn't replace the Bible story for that personal interaction of, and of course, some craft. And don't make, don't, 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 don't think that the whole element of food is any less important. And refreshment. In fact, friends, I can tell you whether I'd be from Ling's story. From my ministry, I've, I've, I've done, starting at Eltham Angels. And then moving to Rohamton, now in money, I'm telling you. We, and, and I would have had the opportunity to work in terms of the mission agency with churches in Western Jamaica, even while here. All of those, when Children's Rally are done, it invariably results in growth in the Sunday School. What do I mean growth? New people begin to come. New people begin to come. I don't know if we, if we, in fact, we will have it for Mission Emphasis Month. And we send out the information, we want to work with you. Not to tell you what to do, but equip you with the tools and your Sunday School will grow. Will grow. Um, sister Lily, we have to talk about funding another time, but we, we also have to bear in mind, it takes money. Not a lot, for God has blessed us with all the necessary resources. Now, here is a personal Sunday School story. Um, Sister Lily, can you read for me? Are you able to see my screen? So I'm talking now about personal Sunday School. Could I have you just read what is on screen?
Okay, so Dion, is it Dion Williams Davis says. Over nineteen will not stop me from keeping my Sunday School. So while I social distance from my other side of the fence. I appreciate what God can have us do in our humble setting. To God be the glory. These are the kids. Um, who have stuck with me during my Sunday School. And I have to make it possible for them to hear the word. All of these kids are from one home.
Thank you. Again, sister Lily, we don't have to come here and create everything. There are Baptist stories that are out there. Now, I did not learn of this story until this year. Okay, I didn't even at the time know that that was part of how God was preparing me for this presentation. And I think I saw a picture with Deacon Dion Davis. She was on her side of the fence and the children would have been on the other side. So while practicing social distance, she was getting the word out. And I say congratulations. And some of us just need to get our stories and tell, um, Sister Samuels and get it out there, what we need our mothers, what people are doing. Now, was that a waste of time? No, no, exposure to the world was created. Friends, about three million people in Jamaica, so it is estimated. The zero to four age group is about twenty five percent. And I hope that you note here, we have a little thing that we think that, boy, there are more men sharp, men not sharp. Look at how it starts out here. The zero to fourteen age group, we have three hundred and sixty. Um, thousand one ninety nine males and females, three forty seven thousand. Look at the fifteen to twenty four age group, which is where all burden lies from zero to, to twenty four. Two fifty five thousand males, one hundred and two. Uh, two fifty five thousand, one hundred and two males and the females, two forty eight thousand nine twenty seven. So right up to twenty four, it seems like our, it's basically balanced, but the males are taking the lead. What is noticeable, here is where the reversal begins. From the twenty five a- age group, right up to sixty five, the males come second in terms of. Um, numbers. And you know, that requires deeper investigation. But my suspicion is that this is where, as the girl on Diva Lee would say, they are deady, our males, then they are deady. After that, but we have such a wonderful opportunity from zero to fourteen. That is where the effort to especially reach our males. And, um, I believe the males are at the heart of the problem, you know, I believe that with me heart. So if we are gonna fix that, fix the problem, we have to deal with it, not to start, not to neglect a female. You know, so let's bear that in mind. And we, we can always go online to get these kind of demographic information. What it says to me, the field is ripe for harvest, you know, labourers may be few. But, uh, we have probably in my estimation between zero to fourteen, one ninety three thousand children. Using the percentage rule of age distribution, who, who, who may be affiliated and are ready. Um, to be written on through the Sunday School. So there is no doubt a population. Despite rightly, the challenges that Reverend Williams would have highlighted at the beginning, but we are the children. It's a question of location. It's a question of location. Sunday School teachers and superintendent, here is something we can borrow, what is called Decision Day. Because if we're serious about evangelism, you can have a decision day, whether it be once per month or once per quarter. But just emphasize it to your teachers, that is where the question must be put to our children. In another presentation, we'll see the numbers of people who is estimated dying and going to hell. Please bear in mind that teaching includes the lost condition of humanity and no possibility of salvation. Simply by education, character, or good works, no. So even if the information is not skewed towards that, then you just need more, you don't need more than three minutes to teach about sin, the love of God. And the need for us to respond. Okay, in, in, in any lesson, we hold up Jesus Christ as the only savior of humankind. And when we start believing that, we are in trouble. Okay? Um, the practical suggestions. So new classes, it is felt tend to. Have more energy in terms of Sunday School. So friends, if you can. Create new classes, something might happen. And I don't know, but something about us, we love newness. Ever notice in the case of youth fellowship, anytime we start youth fellowship, it starts so good. And then after a while, it does go down. So my little theory is that sometime you must create groups to last. For a short time and then you recreate them. The place of Sunday School is no doubt important, while out of. Regular worship, one out of three forty two lost people will accept Christ over a twelve month period. In the case of the Sunday School, one out of three lost people do so through the Sunday School. So there is no doubt in terms of the role and importance of Sunday School. The, the, a vandalistic approach, you can do a poster, place a poster listing the names of lost or unchurched people. In your class and have your class praying for them. Okay, on a personal note, you can pass out an index card of a blank. Um, card size, a business card that will fit in our wallet and which numbers. Can be listed of the names of three lost or unchurched persons. That your class, you are encouraging them to pray for, you want to get them involved in the process of salvation. In class time, include time before and after every lesson to pray specifically for lost and unchurched people. Now friends, please don't make the prayer too long. Because God is on there. So there is a space for long prayers. I remember I told you on the playing field, I told the gentleman, I just need one minute, we have to be people of integrity. I, I, I never went over the minute, probably had a second left. Okay, because that was your football time. And of course, you can have a prayer sheet. Develop a class prayer sheet from Sunday morning, request include the names of lost and unchurched. People print it and share it in class, let them be a part of what is happening. Wouldn't you agree, there is an excitement in numbers? There is inspiration, excitement in numbers, breaking the attendance goal, which we sometimes set. And I know through the Sunday School Department, we have a way of tracking that and churches have that in place. But it has been proven repeatedly that if your Sunday School will go, your church membership will also grow. So you're talking about growth out there, it is missionally, but the, the growth that the Sunday School bring will affect the overall growth of the church. Non-church should ever just have a Sunday School, they should have an evangelistic Sunday School. We have allowed ourselves to drift from evangelization to education alone. Which you know, I have no problem with education, but education cannot save you. So let's create the balance. Sunday School belongs in the evangelistic side of the organizational chart. Says Reverend T double, I'm saying, Gail. Alright, so we bear that in mind. And brothers and sisters, I hope that from what I've shared, I would, can now provoke some questions. And some suggestions, albeit I'm gonna ask us to make them brief, as you know, the time is very short. So, um, Sister Lily will take how many time, how much time we have left. I tried my best to cover that, so we should have some time left for our interaction. And please bear in mind, when we comment, we are not just talking about questions and suggestions. What one thing will I leave and do in my Sunday School? For the, by the month of May, one simple thing we can do. I know, open the floor for conversation.
Please raise your hands if you would like to comment or ask a question. Um, Sister, uh, is it Laurel Gordon Williams?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Good morning, Reverend Richard. Um, I'm from the Waterford Baptist Church, the superintendent for the Sunday School. And at least twice per month, since March, we have been doing the outdoor evangelism. And it has been a success.
And outdoor evangelism, meaning outdoor Sunday School?
Outdoor Sunday School, outdoor Sunday School.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so there you go. So Sister Laurel Gardner is a resource person. If you're interested, you can always call her. Thank you, Kevin Jones.
Yes, um, Pastor, so it's for a comment from me, um, just a very quick comment. Um, thank you for the presentation and very happy that you've ended, um, by focusing on Sunday School. Being an evangelistic endeavor. And not just, um, a deepening or an academic endeavor. I think sometimes when we have Sunday School, um, we focus, um, a lot on trying to. Get our, um, students to, you know, get a deeper understanding and engaged in the world. Um, you know, without pressing the gas on the evangelistic side. And I think there is opportunity for us to press the gas on the evangelistic side a little bit more. Um, and not just in, you know, whatever month that we have as evangelistic month, for example. But on a, um, weekly basis.
Absolutely. That's why I said it's a lifestyle. So Mr Jones, the part of, in the responses looking.
Yes, so, 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 so my thing is that, is that I will commit to, um. Making or ensuring that in my particular Sunday School. Um, but not just my class, but the other classes that I have remit for to, um, suggest strongly. To my fellow teachers that every single week that we have, um, a bit of a in evangelistic. Um, focus or twist or track or, um, drive. And particularly that we identify those of our students. Who are not yet committed their lives and to see, um, whether we can make the evangelistic focus. Who are not yet committed their lives and to see um, whether we can make the evangelistic focus. Um, for them. So that's, that's a commitment that I give.
Yes, and, and, and you, 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 you will report to Sister Lily, because for the, we want to, the measure of. In terms of the importance of this presentation. Yes, man. That's, that's all of us.
Brother Kevin.
Alright, alright, Loris Griffiths.
Bethel, Bethel, Bethel.
Okay, okay.
Loris Griffiths, go ahead, please.
Good morning, everyone, um, from the Old Derby Baptist um, church. Or so we have currently um, what we call a satellite Sunday school. Um, in one of the communities nearby or church. Um, you, you mentioned um, um, being accountable. I, I, well, I don't think accountable was the word that you used, but in terms of coordinating so that. Um, the, 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 the Sunday school department, the National Sunday School Department. Is aware of all of these extra activities that are taking place. So that um, maybe Sister Lily would be able to say, okay, this church is. Has a satellite Sunday school, this one has a um, a yard Sunday school running. And so everybody's supporting each other. The, the other thing is, you also mentioned the Sunday school rally. In terms of um, coming together of all the Sunday schools in one place. And in, in addition to that, um, in addition to all the, the, the suggestions that were made. Um, we could also organize maybe. Um, what would call, I don't know if it's, if it's a concert or something. To that effect where we prepare the children and they come together in one place from all over the island to perform. Um, that's just that suggestion.
You are muted Reverend Richards.
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Yes, we, we accept persons as you come, you make your suggestions quickly, but you also highlight. Um, one thing that you may leave and implement, remember the approach to Sunday school is both communal and personal. So um, so please bear that in mind. We go to Renee and then Charlotte.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good morning, little morning. Um, Rev, I agree with uh, Mister Kevin Jones, um, that we should take an evangelistic approach with the Sunday school. Because I am a living example of someone who came from our Sunday school at Waterford Baptist Church. And I can say that many of the young persons that I know who are actively involved in the life of the church. It all started by what was done in the Sunday school. And even today, persons who are still leaders in our church, they actually started out in the Sunday school. And I saw other young persons who became Christians and because they were not so actively involved in Sunday school. We lost them quickly, but those persons, if we have that focus and see it as an evangelistic. Um, outreach and um, program, it will really surely help in the ministry of the overall church itself to the point.
Sorry to cut you, but you know, we are limited for time, so. What, 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 what one thing you're gonna leave here and, and, and do?
The, the parents of the students became members of our church because of the involvement of their children in Sunday school. And that's all I want to end, thank you.
No, what is your, you're not here, what is, what are you plan, what is your takeaway?
To, to see it more as an evangelistic um, plus in regards to the Sunday school in my um, church. But we have been working in that area already.
Thank you, Renee. Alright, friends, I'm gonna ask you to make it as brief as possible, because Sister Lily is on time. So we want to get as many persons in, please include what one thing you are going home to employ. From the, the presentation, any, even if it's a renewal of a commitment. Charlotte, Deacon Charlotte, go ahead, please, and then Judith Dixon.
Good morning, everyone. I'm from Gurnis Mount Baptist Church. Um, some time ago, many, um, quite a while, we would have um, gone twice at a shop that is nearby. Now there is a car wash nearby, so what we will do is at least once per month, when we have our Sunday school. We will go to that shop as it is very near our church. And then we expand from there.
So Sunday school can take place at the shop too. Thank you very much, Sister Charlotte. And, and I think we all agree that in church, Sunday school, which is a regular one, that is not, we're not asking that that be replaced. But if we could lend ourselves to see what new things um, might we need to try, what new approaches? And then Sister Lily will later tell us how we're going to develop a system of accountability. So that when we report, we're not just reporting on Sunday morning. In fact, my research shows me that some churches are having Sunday school on other days. So Sunday school is not just a Sunday thing. Judith Dixon, let's take you.
Um, good morning, everyone. I'm hearing your presentation and the growth. I think we need as teachers to be, to more, give more sacrifice. We have to be sa- ready to give sacrificial service. Not just coming Sunday morning at church, doing what we have to do from the textbook and leave it there. We are trying to have an outreach Sunday school and the lack of persons to volunteer as teachers. Has caused us to not really ready to move. Because they come Sunday morning, they do that and they will never give an extra one hour for us to do the outreach. So we need to be more sacrificial in our duty and our commitment to God. Secondly.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Secondly, I want to, when I go back, is to get myself involved with more with the youth department. Because we need to have our youth, our young adults, Sunday class more vibrant. So we need to get to the youth and collaborate with them to see how much we can join. Also, the Women's Federation at our church, to see how much we can work together. We have women in the Federation who have grandchildren and children. Who are not really in the Sunday school, so we can draft them in. And together we work sacrificially for the Lord and build our Sunday school and also our church.
Before you hang up, Sister Judith, don't hang up, um, the, the two things you propose. Is the, the last one, I believe the Federation has a tremendous model, I, I kind of forgot to have mentioned it, the creative ministry. Uh, that's another way to grow this Sunday school. Are you familiar with the creative ministry, um, Sister Dixon?
Yes, we, uh, when I started, I'm from Greg Report Baptist Church.
Right.
When I started, I heard of it, I think it had not totally diminished when I went there. But it was in its state of, I wouldn't say dying, but in a rocking state, it wasn't steady. But no, I'm not hearing much, but.
It's like what, well, I think you can consult them, because this is a tremendous ministry. To honor the, the children who get christened and to follow them up.
Yes, that was, yeah.
Second thing, Sister Dixon, this is just based on what you said, and I just want us to leave and reiterate it. You don't have to wait on a committee to begin your yards on the school. So your veranda can be a place, you just need one or two of you, of course, follow the protocol to inform a church, so just bear that in mind. Alright, thank you for your contribution.
Yes, welcome.
Sha, sh, aside, go ahead.
Hi, good morning, everyone, from Mount Peace Baptist, Lucy Circuit in Hannover.
Yes.
Um, yes, what I want to report, all that you mentioned, Rev. It has been something that we've been doing with our older children, especially on Good Friday. Six of our older children, between the ages ten to fifteen, got baptized. And.
One on your man, that deserve a hand clap, go on, sit the hand clap them, go here. We talk the hand clap them, raise the Lord.
Four females and two males between the ages ten to fifteen. Um, a concern I have though, it's reaching the youths. Because right now in the youth class, I don't really have many students. And what I see happening, you are aware what is happening in Hannover, um, with this, yes. There's a spot where young men gather and usually every little community tends to have that kind of thing, the chill spots on the morning. The drinking and all of that. I'm just wondering, how can we target? Because I'm hearing more about children, children. And I think for the older, the young adults, um, the older persons, we're leaving them out. And I'm just looking for suggestion, I'm thinking, Rev, of how I can.
Alright, Sasha, let, let's, let, let's answer your question, you have, you have raised it and we thank you for the success story. Um, remember, the, 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 and if I did never made it clear, we have to look at outdoors Sunday school, which is to meet people where they are. I don't know if we'll call this on the school, but in one of the churches, a couple of the churches I pass, I will have Bible study on the ends. Which is, you can't take the formal approach, we go to the shop, pizza, the man there, they have one them, spliff and whatever. But you go and interact with them and, and share the word of God. So you have to just meet and I, I know what you're talking about. But Jesus came to call, not to call the righteous, but sinners to repent them, so we can ask on them. And I can tell you, it makes a difference. So we have to just meet people. Sunday school at the shop, there's a pizza or plaza or under the tree where they meet. A group of you, don't go by yourself, but a group of you go, they'll give a listening voice, people in Jamaica still love God. Alright, Anne Marie Jane.
Good morning, yes, I'm from the Heartland Baptist, the Old Derby Bay Circuit. I, we had have um, had a. Children rally before at our church and it was very successful. But what we are finding is that once you engage them.
Sister Anne Marie, we have um, Gloria, and I realize you're out of time, so just be pre- brief and to the point, I try not to comment. And um, before we hand over to Master Control, so go ahead quickly, thirty seconds.
Yes, so we, we can't really approach it that way, because once the, the gifts and so are not there, they are not coming. But I am glad for your, the opportunity of hearing about the community Sunday school. So what I am going to try to do is to meet the children at their own home. Because of the, the geographical um, layout of my community, maybe that's what we'll have to do.
Absolutely, well pointed and to the point. So Sister Anne Marie Jane, so we, 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 we want to hear about that by next month. Gloria Campbell. Then Miss Mark. Quick comments to the point, Gloria, go ahead, unmute Gloria. Alright, Gloria, see, miss, oh yes, go ahead Gloria.
I'm sorry about that.
Yes, I'm from the Montego West Gate Hills Baptist Church.
Yes.
Assistant, you. Alright, what, we have had a meeting recently where we plan and restart in the Zoom, the Zoom platform.
Right.
In relation to Sunday school, because what we noticed is that since the end of COVID. We hardly see the children, yes, the, the adult classes have grown, the men and male and female classes have grown. So what I plan to introduce to my Sunday school. Um, teachers, when I go back, is the community. And I, I was really impressed by um, that over the fence, so the school that that lives. Really impressed with that.
Five students.
Yes, also the veranda, yes.
Yeah.
Veranda, yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you, Sister Gloria, we're sorry, really sorry we owe that time and, but you can always. Send, send your ideas to Sister Lily, um, because we have to hear the mothers that are working and strengthening each other. Miss Mark and then Rosemary, and then I hand over to Master Control.
Yes, I'm Nazli McCoy, Shadow Baptist Church. I, I'm thinking, hearing all that has been said, that. We would try a child or two, two yard Sunday school. Would, would, would work out, even if you start with two in a yard, you will have. The person next door and, and see how it works from, from there. Even if, at, at least it wouldn't be on a Sunday, but it would be outreach, thank you.
Yes, yes, Miss Mark, and be sure to note it, so if, for example. You are doing that, I could always allow you to liaise with the lady from Saint John's Baptist in our community, right here in Santa. Who has started it, it's two students, but they have never, they have, they are, they are, they are not, they are unchurched. And Miss Mark, all you need for that, just put on a good tea. And you just have a little piece of bread and a little peanut butter. Yes, because you know, those are children.
Yes, and eventually, eventually they may become part of the regulars, Sunday school.
Absolutely, and they, they will, very soon two will turn four, because they are gonna talk about what is happening at Miss Mark. Thank you so much, Rosemary Taylor, you are the last person.
Good morning, um, I just want to say, um, I, I have a little. Big yard, it's a yard with many children and we have our Sunday school there. And um, it's growing because more babies are being born there. And um, um, it's, it's, it's a good model to start with. And also when we are having like youth activities at church, I invite them also. So just hearing that.
The big, the big yard, Sister Rosemary, run the big yard, yeah man, that's what the church. Look where the people are and instead of waiting for them to come to the church. Take the church to them, we have to think about church without building. Sister Rosemary, I didn't even remember, I, I'm glad you, you came there, because things did not, is not just overseas. But we went to with Sister um, Rosemary um, to Shrewsbury. How many people do you think came out for that children's rally? We're planning for, I think, twenty twenty five, a hundred. You know, it was then right on the school grounds, so it requires partnership. They made your school grounds available, because the church was much smaller, a hundred or more children came out. Uh, that was when Sister Rosemary, December, or so?
Yeah, yes, Rev, it was in December.
December, is that connection. Friends, the worst thing we can do as a church is to stop trying.
Yeah.
That's not an option, as we continue to try, a difference will be made. It has been my absolute joy, I hope that in one way or the other, you're inspired. I didn't ask you to do everything, but if you can find one thing to do, it will make Jamaica Baptist Union and Jamaica a better place. Sister Lily, over to you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Richards, you have given us so much to think about and so much to. To, to see how, what we can put into practice. Um, we, we want to ask you to just end this section with um, that prayer that you, you have planned. But we, we, we thank God for you and for your ministry among us this morning. One of the things that have stuck with me is the fact that we, we need to be able to share what's happening. Our various churches and the fact that, you know, maybe outside of the official. Um, uh, uh, mechanism, things are happening. And, 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 and it is encouraging, it is encouraging, because after all, the important thing is that we want to know that people come to know the Lord. People come to know the Lord, people get saved and God's kingdom is advanced. So, so thank you, we certainly will again, this is being recorded, so we can look at it again. And um, really come up with some definite plans, but, but we want to thank you. What's shared from your heart and from your experience with us this morning. We know you have to rush out to our funeral, so we will not want to keep, but we ask you to, to. We now pray, heed us in that prayer of commitment.
Yes, certainly. And while I pray for everyone, but is there, are there persons on, you can just use the raisin feature. You would just like a special prayer for your Sunday school, your church and also yourself. Um, as the hands go up, hallelujah, I will take the liberty. Um. To just by faith, place hands, so for your church, your Sunday school, just begin to raise those hands. Father, we thank you for the Sunday school ministry, hallelujah. We thank you, Lord, that we are all beneficiaries of such a ministry, whatever we have become, whatever we are. We are all beneficiaries, we thank you for our Father George Lyle. Oh, yes, Lord, sought to bring the gospel. But Lord, in his own thoughts and ideology, he thought that for people to fully appreciate the gospel, they had to be educated. And that thought was translated into action in the implementation of church schools. So what was church on Sunday became school Monday to Friday. We thank you that we have that legacy and that continues today. And Lord, perhaps we have gone to the extreme side, where we are now emphasizing education over salvation. Because many of our youths, Lord, they grew up in Sunday school and as soon as they reach high school. They stop that which brought them to. They stop that which brought them to where they are. And we know that your word is the only solution to many of the problems of the world. Thank you for bringing us in this virtual space. You are really creative, God, and so, God, we now curse technology this morning. We are praising you. That you have blessed us with technology that we can use to our advantage. You now see every hand that is raised, Lord. Hallelujah, representing individuals and churches. Lord, as I place my hands on them, we pray for your transformative power. Give them vision, hallelujah, so that they may see things like you do, even now, Lord. Every hand raised represents a church, represents a home. Hallelujah. Do not just give them vision, Lord, but Lord, grant them wisdom to know just what to do. Some of us are at the place where we, we feel like we can't bother, Lord, because we have tried so many things and so many things of faith. But give us vision, Lord, give us fresh vision to see things like you do. Lord, give us that vision that we will begin to see things happening. We will see things coming together in the mighty name of Jesus. Lord, I pray over them. Hallelujah, every one of you with your hands raised, that you will not be overwhelmed. In fact, type in the chat, I won't be overwhelmed. Lord, there are problems. Oh God, even our churches in finding support for people to be committed. Some people say they are coming and when is execution dated? Don't turn up and it bothers us, Lord. And sometimes we even want to give them peace away, mine, in a righteous way. But Master God, you are God. And I declare this to be a turnaround day. Lord, I declare it to be a turnaround year. I speak in the atmosphere, I speak of our churches. That, Lord, even by the time the next assembly comes around, the figures will be headed in the right direction. That more of our young people will be coming out to, to, to divine intervention, but also to practical demonstration. We pray for growth in yards on the school, growth in communities on the school, satellite Sunday school. Hallelujah, that place is, oh God, hallelujah, where nothing has been happening. Things will begin to happen in the mighty name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. We pray, God, that we will have, develop a culture of sharing. Hallelujah, we will not be quiet about what you are doing. So we pray for an expansion in terms of children's rally. Hallelujah, even as summer is coming up, an expansion in terms of VBS, yes, Lord. And Lord, we pray that you will raise up for yourself teachers who are passionate about seeing persons come to a saving knowledge of you. In the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, I bless every one of you. I bless even the hands that are not raised. I bless you. I bless your church. I pray the strength of the Lord Almighty upon you. And I declare activation over you and your church, where the Sunday School ministry is concerned. In Jesus' mighty name, amen and amen.
Amen, amen, amen. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Rev. And may God bless you as you continue to serve him in this way. May he enable you and may his spirit continue to rest upon you and energize you. God bless you. For this. Well, friends, I think we have got a lot. To go and think about, um, not only to think about, but to pray about. And then to put into action. Think Reverend Richards emphasized that, you know, to put into action. One of the things he, he's, he said that remains with me is that we have to be careful as Sunday School. Teachers and superintendents and churches on a whole. That we do not just emphasize the education that persons receive in the Sunday School. But there is evangelization part that is critical. Because as much as it is a good thing for persons to, to know the scriptures. It forms character, but it's accepting Jesus as Savior. That really puts people into the kingdom. And so as Sunday School teachers and as administrators of our Sunday Schools. Let's go back to our churches and convey that emphasis. As you can see, the session has been recorded and so it will be available. Uh, to, to those who were not able to see, were not able to be with us. At the same time to, we are aware that many of us who have been present would like to. Listen again, especially to that presentation that was so comprehensive. And so I, I suggest, I really strongly suggest that we, we look again when it is available to us, when that recording is available to us. Again, and look at the presentation, um, share it with our, our, our teachers. Now to see how as a church, how as a Sunday School. We can really be faithful to that mandate from the Lord Jesus. And so as we approach twelve, um, if there is no other comment, I want to thank all of you. For coming. We thank all of you who have taken the time to be with us. There's a questionnaire we'd be shared with those who didn't register. Um, we will look at that because Brother Sheldon has. Information from previous registration, but we don't know, perhaps people have changed. You know, leadership has changed, so we have to go on what is here. But in addition to that. We normally send out to the churches, to the ministers and, and the, the church secretaries. Normally send out and that will be done centrally. But in addition to that, we will send out to. Here. So I thank all of you for coming. I thank the members of the Sunday School Committee. For their assistance in, in preparing for this webinar. We, we thank the persons who have participated actively, especially those who have made presentations. Um, we, we, we thank Brother Sheldon of Connor for his guidance. And his assistance and his facilitation of, of this session. And just, it's just a pleasure working with Brother Sheldon and I, I pray God's blessing upon him. And so we come to the end of this program and I'm going to ask Mrs. Kellie Rotham Blair. From Mandeville Baptist to the closing prayer.
Thank you so much, Sister Lily.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Let us pray. Our Father God in heaven. We thank you for the time of refreshing, Lord, this time of renewal that you have given unto us. A time, oh God, in which you have granted us insight as to how we may grow our Sunday Schools, Lord, through effective. And effective, Lord, evangelization. We thank you, Lord, for the fact that you are using this time, oh God, to, to guide us. The time, oh God, that you are using us to positively impact the lives of our children and our adults, oh God. That we be, be so prepared, oh God, to effectively and practically. Spread the gospel of Jesus Christ to them, oh God, and to have them just be drawn close, oh Lord, to your word. Lord God, we thank you for our guest speaker, your manservant, Reverend Lloyd Richards, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for the wealth of information, oh God, that you have allowed him, oh God, to give to us. Information, oh God, that he has laid before us, oh God. We just pray that you will continue, Lord, to. To bless him and to use him, oh God, for your ministry and that you will just grant us the wisdom. As Sunday School teachers and leaders and stakeholders, oh God, to apply what he has presented. So that we may be effective, God, in, in evangelizing and in reaching the lost. And in empowering lives through the leading of your Holy Spirit. Father God, we thank you for the information that have been presented by your sisters, Sister Jessa and Sister Lily. We thank you, Lord, for the, the ideas and the, the initiatives, Lord, that you are downloading to us. To provide a support, oh God, to the needy Sunday School ministries. So that we may grow in number and to grow in spiritual capacity, Lord, and to build lasting relationships. We thank you, Lord, for all other participants of this session. Reverend Williams who inspired us with his greeting, Sister Myrna, Lord, who blessed us with her opening prayer. We thank you, Lord, for Brother Sheldon and his team who have granted us tech support. We ask, Lord, for a special blessing over the JBU Sunday School Committee, Lord, and the entire. JBU Christian Education Department. Continue, Lord, to grant us. And strengthen us, oh God, grant us the wisdom so that you may lead us, oh God, to. To enhance your Sunday School ministries, Lord, across this country. So that lives may, may be transformed in the name of Jesus Christ. Lord, we thank you for all those who have attended this session. May you remind us, Lord, to be deliberate. With the presentation of the gospel.
Yeah.
That you may allow us, Lord, not to be confined to the spaces and places. That are convenient for us, but that you will help us, Lord, to launch out into the unknown areas. To meet the needs of our children and our youth. Lord, help us to improve on our mission to connect. And to improve, oh God, on just the way in which, Lord, we deliver content. Allow us, Lord, to use the idea shared today to take back to our Sunday Schools. To effectively spread the gospel of Jesus Christ. As we seek to mold lives and build Christ-like characters. Bless our endeavors, we pray, as we surrender ourselves, oh God. To be used as servants for you. May you receive all honour, glory and praise as you just create a complete transformation. Or within our Sunday Schools and create a complete overall overhaul within our Sunday School ministries, oh God. Have your way within us and within our Sunday Schools. We ask this in the matchless name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen, amen, amen. And receive the benediction. May the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious unto you. May the Lo- Lord lift the light of his countenance upon you and give you peace now and forevermore. Amen.